The City of New Britain. Building hope together for a greater community.
Good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the meeting, the, I hereby call to order the Planning, Zoning, and Housing Meeting on September 13th, 2017. The time is 6:49. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the roll?
Alderman Polkowski.
Here.
Alderman Sanders. Alderman Carlosi. Alderman Giantonio.
Here.
Alderman Naples.
Here.
Alderman Salerno.
Here.
Alderman Sanchez. We have five here. We have a quorum also seated. We have Alderman Rizzato, Alderman Pavone, Alderman Hargraves, and Alderman Smedley, and Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Will you please read into record the Notice of Public Hearing?
I'm here too.
Oh, and Alderman Salvio.
Thank you. We don't want to forget Alderman Salvio.
The Committee on Planning, Zoning, and Housing will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 13th at 6:45 PM in Council Chambers, City Hall, second floor, 27 West Main Street, New Britain, Connecticut for the following. Resolution Number 33896, Proposed Amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Section 8-35, to change the rules concerning the charges for the Fire Prevention Bureau inspections and permits. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written communications may be received. Copies of said items are available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the Town and City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Having been properly noticed, we will begin the public hearing. First item on the resolution, on the agenda is Resolution Number 33896, Proposed Amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Section 8-35, to change the rules concerning the charges for Fire Prevention Bureau inspections and permits. Is, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Third and final time, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Yes, Mr. King. Mr. King, there's a three-minute limit. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Donald King, 21 Troutbrook Circle, Newington, Connecticut. Fire Marshal, so I was promoted to Fire Marshal 2014, and one of the things we took a look at was the ways that we can increase revenue to the city. And we noticed that the fees that we were charging hadn't been updated in a couple decades. So we did some comparison to other fire, you know, like-sized departments around the state. We made some recommendations in who we are today.
Perfect.
So, and we think they reflect, you know, what's happening in, you know, like-sized communities.
Perfect.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. And last time, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone here to speak against this item? Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Third and final time, is there anyone here to speak against Resolution Number 33896? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. At 6:52 PM. Mr. Clerk, are we ready to roll into the regular meeting? Thank you. I hereby call to order the special meeting of Planning, Zoning, and Housing. We, no one has left the room. We still do have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is Resolution Number 33896, Proposed Amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Section 8-35, to change the rules concerning the charges for Fire Prevention Bureau inspections and permits. May I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Giantonio.
Make a motion to accept and refer back to the full council with a favorable recommendation, Resolution 33896.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Giantonio, seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Are you a member of the planning, zoning, and housing?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as we heard from Fire Marshal King, this is the fire department looking at their fees, seeing that we haven't adjusted them in probably 20 years. I also noticed that there were some things added, like a retail firework vendor, things like that, that probably weren't addressed before. So all in all, I think probably twofold here, bringing our fees more in line with what they should be in like-sized communities, but then also addressing public safety issues like if there was a fireworks store to open. You know, I would imagine there would be more of an inspection there than versus something like a barber shop, so it would make sense that the fee would be a little bit higher. And I urge referral.
Thank you, Alderman Giantonio. Any other members of the council would like to add to discussion? Any other members? Seeing none. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Giantonio, seconded by Alderman Naples. Meeting is adjourned at 6:54 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. September 13th, 2017. This is the public participation section of our regular council agenda, beginning at exactly 7:03 PM. Just as fair notice that we certainly encourage people to come in and speak and participate. You have a three-minute limit with regard to that, so it gives everyone an opportunity to be able to speak. Please provide your address and your name to the council for the record, and we will begin to move forward. I have some people who have signed up already, and if I do not pronounce your names, apology, I apologize ahead of time. The first person is Peter Alter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is Peter Alter. I'm an attorney at Practice Law in Glastonbury at 701 Hebron Avenue at the firm of Alter and Pearson. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Jay's Auto and its application to establish its business at 866 West Main Street. You have in the materials tonight a favorable recommendation from the zoning subcommittee for approval of this proposal. Up to this date, the applicant and the owner of the property have moved forward to secure all of the necessary other approvals. There were some minor variances that were granted and have been perpetuated through the process that the zoning board of appeals has, as well as an affirmative recommendation from your planning commission and an appropriate report from your planning department. This matter is in order. The building has been renovated. Those of you who've had a chance to look at the property know that a substantial investment has been made to bring this property back to productive use. The good news is that the owners, City Grinding Two, represented by Lorraine Madison, one of the family members, has found Jesus Ruiz and his wife, Minerva Cardona, who want to establish their business there. Mr. Ruiz is a graduate of E.C. Goodwin. Ms. Cardona is a New Britain native. She's a property owner in New Britain and very active in the community, and they are very anxious and excited to open their business at this location. With that, Mr. Chairman, I haven't quite used my three minutes, but I'll turn it over to the next person. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lorraine Madison, 57 Hillcrest Road, Nyannick, Connecticut. A number of months ago, we brought forth a proposal in front of the board to rent the property at 866 West Main Street, and it was approved. However, we lost our tenant. I'd like to look at this in a positive light, because now we have a young couple who are very excited about opening a business in our space. Maybe it would have been nicer to have a different type of business on this property, but the building lends itself to car sales and repairs, and that's the clientele that has shown interest. Jesus and Minerva are just the right couple to open this building. They plan to also be involved in the community, and for me, I'm excited, because they love my building, and that means they'll take good care of it. I took over my parents' physical and financial care over five years ago. It was at that time that my husband and I realized the amount of disrepair at the 866 property. We both worked and didn't realize the time and effort that we would be putting into the renovation, not to mention the financial burden. But we did it, and now I believe it's one of the nicest-looking buildings on West Main Street. Last week, it was mentioned how worn the City Grinding building looks compared to the 866 property, which is true. However, I'd like to point out that we've already started improvements on the property. We stuck out the outside of the Marathon Pizza business and the garage at the end of the building to match that of the 866 building. In addition, we created a new area for the garbage dumpsters, instead of having three dumpsters set out in different locations in the parking lot. We plan to continue with these repairs, but at this time need to build up the funds and personally get ourselves ready for another renovation. However, I want you to know it's my vision that in time, the City Grinding building will mirror that of the 866 property. New Britain has been a part of my family's life, my parents' lives, for 90 and 89 years, respectively. They were born and raised in New Britain. My father's owned City Grinding for over 50 years, and the 866 property for over 35 years. In addition, they've been paying taxes to the city while also bringing in jobs and revenue. I got to thinking. My mother passed away this past spring, and she's buried at St. Mary Cemetery. She will forever be a part of the City of New Britain. My dad is 89 years old and requires 24-hour care. Although it's been a hardship, because we've had no income for the past years, my family continues to honor their obligation to the City of New Britain by paying our taxes. Seeing that this is the same proposal that has been previously approved, plus the addition of our new tenants, who I believe are a much better fit, I'm hopeful that you will rule in our favor again. Thank you in advance for helping to make this happen.
Thank you. Jesus Ruiz?
Good evening. My name is Jesus Ruiz, 128 Owens Way, Bristol, Connecticut. As Peter said, I'm a graduate from here, from E.C. Goodwin, and I have like a work-study program in place with Mr. Charles, which is the director of the automotive over there. That's where I learned all of my automotive skills, and I use them in the force since 2000. I've learned a lot, and when we came across the building, it looks great, renovated. It kind of matches what we represent and what we want to show, especially myself. I want to give back to the community, give back to the school where I learned so much, and kind of bring the kids over so they can see what they could accomplish in life as well, as well as I have, and learn what it is to be successful and apply yourself and get somewhere in life, and especially the community nowadays with kids, you know, pretty much don't know what they want in life. And if I could, you know, help direct them in the right path, like Mr. Charles is doing, such a good job over there. I like the building. It's my passion since I was little. My dad used to take me to the track and race cars, and it's in my blood. And again, the building looks great. That area is starting to turn around, looking great, and I want to be a part of that, and thanks a lot.
Thank you. Minerva Cardona?
Good evening. My name is Minerva Cardona. I too reside at 128 Owens Way in Bristol, Connecticut. Once again, as Peter said, I was born and raised in New Britain. I do see the change that the city has become today, and what greater thing to be a part of but the City of New Britain. I went to E.C. as well. I didn't take automotive. I took gaugeback. But I know what I'm doing when it comes to cars, too. I can help. Limited help. But I do want to say, this is a great opportunity, not only for us, but for the City of New Britain, for the youth of New Britain. As a child growing up here, I didn't have much to do. You know, the Boys and Girls Club wasn't big then. There was really no guidance at the time. I do thank God that I am where I am today without that guidance, but I'm here to support my husband. It's what he wants to do. I have faith in him, and by his side, we will make it happen. You know, we just want to give back. It's what we do everywhere, whether it's in church, the communities we work in. He was recognized for the prettiest auto shop in Cheshire. What auto shop is pretty? But he got it, and he puts flowers there, and I don't have a green thumb, but he does. He brings home flowers, and they flourish, and our yard is his pride. So I know he's going to give that pride back to his automotive business, to the City of New Britain. I have faith in him, and I hope that everyone rules in his favor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Davis?
My name is Ronald Davis, 280 Brittany Farms Road, here in the City of New Britain, and I have two things I want to share with the Board of Aldermen. First one is, yesterday, my pastor, Bishop Dale Shaw, was contacted by a resident that needed help. It was more help than the church could provide, so we contacted our friend from the police department, our chief warder, let him know what was going on, and Chief Wardwell, I'm sure I pronounced your name wrong, but you know who I'm talking about. He opened his doors right away without question and had us bring the young man down there. The young man was afraid to go to the police department. He has a long history of criminal behavior, so he was afraid to go to the police department , for he did not want to go to jail. The chief made sure that everything was made appropriate for him to go down to the police department so that he could receive help. This young man had a new experience here in New Britain, where he went to the police department and found friends, and that's the big thing. He was able to go receive services. He's not in jail. Things were taken care of, and that's the kind of city that we want to have here in New Britain, and that's the kind of leadership we want in every department here in the city. So we want to thank Chief Wardwell and the City of New Britain Police Department for a job well done. Let's give him a hand. I'm also here for the New Britain chapter of the NAACP as its president, and New Britain NAACP, we received the complaint of certain alleged civil rights violation practices in the New Britain Fire Department back in March. Because of that complaint, we decided to have a rally to galvanize our community, the New Britain community, stand against racism and discrimination that we thought was very important, especially with the floodgates of racism opening up by white supremacy activities in the, in the, in the country. And we don't want that to be here in New Britain. So we had a rally, and we wanted city officials to show responsibilities and respond, respond to the racial complaints. There's no place, there's no room, and there should be no tolerance for racism and discrimination in New Britain. That's the stand of the NAACP, and I hope that's the stand of every resident here in the City of New Britain. It shouldn't be in the state of Connecticut or any state or in the United States. But thanks to Mayor Stewart, Mayor Stewart, she did respond and, to the call of action, and promised us that she would hire a private counselor to do an investigation with, I believe it's the city human, human development officer here. That was done, and in early August, I went to a meeting along with other members of the black community and one member of the Latino Coalition to go over that report that was made by the Human Resources Director and D.C.B. Law Group from out of, I believe, out of, it was out of Connecticut, I'm not sure where.
Sorry, Mr. Davis. I have to make sure we stay within the three-minute priority.
How much time do I have?
You're gone already.
Oh.
We've done three already.
Okay. If you could just probably give me-
I apologize for that, but that is the limitation we have to have. I can't extend it farther.
Okay. Well, I'll sit down, but I do want to end it by just saying, we, the NAACP would like the immediate resignation of the chief of fire department for exhibiting racial bias, racial discrimination against members of the fire department. If he doesn't resign, we hope that the mayor of the city terminate his contract to provide services as the fire chief of the City of New Britain, and that each one of you, Republican and Democratic lawmakers, would support the mayor in that effort. We further strongly encourage ongoing diversity training classes-
Mr. Davis, I really can't for the entire process. I apologize.
...for all city employees, hopefully to minimize the onset of continued racially motivated occurrences in our city department.
We can still hear you, Mr. Davis, of course. But you're good at that. It's okay. I understand.
Okay. One more. We recommend the NAACP and the Latino Coalition-
I don't want to gavel you out, sir.
-for the higher prep process for the new change.
We've been friends for far too long, Mr. Davis. I don't want to have to gavel you out. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate the words that you shared with us. It's a tough job up here, but someone has to do it, okay? Thank you. Joe Gergenti, please.
Can I have this passed around? Just give it to them.
Please be sure, we do want to try to keep within our three-minute limit for everyone. Thank you.
Okay. 18. My name is Joe Gergenti, 67, Martha Luther King Drive. Last Thursday, I went to lunch in at the senior center, and I have found out that they are going to put a greenhouse at the senior center. And at the senior center, they're going to take nine parking spots away and have the people walk 40 feet to get to the front door instead of walking 15 feet. This is not right. I don't see how you could build a greenhouse in front of the senior center in the back, where the main entrance that the people use. When they walk out the window, they got nice trees to look at. They got beautiful scenery. When you put one of those up there, who's going to take care of it? You think seniors are going to go out there every day and work the garden? No, they're not going to do it. You think Roots is going to come down and work the garden? No, they only built. They don't come around no more, because I work with them on different projects. But the seniors are up there, they're starting to partition, they're going around now, and they would like to find if we could get it stopped. Because the senior, if you see on that map how beautiful the place is, nice and clean, the grass is cut, the place is beautiful, and they're going to ruin it with a greenhouse. It's out, it's, it doesn't fit. You know, when you put an object up, it has to fit in your community, and this doesn't fit down there in that type of a building. So I am asking the council to look into this, see what we could do to have it stopped. They have other places in the parking lot they could build it, and it won't affect any of the seniors down here. But to move handicap parking spots for a greenhouse? I don't know whoever thought of this part. So I think there's a wall against that, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nancy Sanabria, 210 Brittany Farms Road, New Britain. I am the director of the Little Miss Puerto Rico Pageant, and I came here to introduce our new 2017 Little Miss Puerto Rico Pageant, Skylani.
Good afternoon. My name is Skylani Rodriguez. I am nine years old. I represent the town of Ibonito, a Little Miss Puerto Rico of New Britain. I was chosen queen 2017. I learned about my culture, made new friends, and have been attending local activities. I urge parents to prepare their kids so that they can participate in the 2018 pageant.
And thank you for being an example to all adults about staying within the three-minute Charles Terzolo, or Terzol?
Thank you, Mr. My name is Charles Terzolo, for the record. I live at 44 South High Street, New Britain, Connecticut. I came to my attention in August that they're planning a total tear-down of the property between Myrtle and Curtis, which is the historic backbone of the Stanley complex. I've learned more and more about it as time goes on, but I have taken a look at the, the area, and it is overbuilt. It was built at a time when there weren't cars. There's already one building down that was along the tracks, where now you can park there, but still, all along Myrtle is a very tall building that really blocks the view of the space and the lot. I'm to understand that Stanley has a buyer possibly for the 1940s building, but as a result, we are all on alarm for this. They are tearing down every single structure behind, before 1900. It's over nine buildings. It's the tower. It's the rolling house. It's the powerhouse, and these are the signature buildings of the Stanley property. They lend value to the entire 35 acres and six blocks of this complex, and without these structures, with all of them demolished, you don't really get a sense of where you are. You don't get a sense of what you're a part of or what's going on. It's just a ramble of, of 80s and 70s and 1940s and 1930s buildings for the rest of the property. So I would like the council to take a look at this property and look at preserving up to 30 to 40% of it, that would allow half the property to still be developed and for their new building to be seen from the street, and preserve the rolling house, the powerhouse, the chimney stack, and the dramatic bridge that crosses Curtis Street. It needs a little power washing. It needs a little bit of gloss black paint, and so does the tower, but when those are complete, everyone else looking to buy or partially demolish other parts of the property and the other four blocks will feel that they are part of this Stanley complex. I understand there was four major people that were a part of the New Britain development. One of them was Pfaffner, and as you may know, there's no F in New Britain anymore. Okay? If you want to see a Pfaffner building, you have to go to Newington. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the individuals who have signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak before public participation this evening? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak for public participation this evening? Final time, anyone who would like to speak before public participation to the council? If not, then we will close public participation at 7:24 PM. Thank you. Any comments from members of the council with regard to anything spoken? Yes, Alderman Salvio?
Okay. I don't think the gentleman meant it, that, meant it this way, but I'm not sure. But during the speech of the fellow from NAACP, he mentioned white supremacy. I don't know if he meant this, but as far as I know, and as far as I am concerned, there is no white supremacy of any kind being practiced in the City of New Britain by this body or any other body that I know of. So that's just my two cents.
Sorry about that.
Am I supposed to respond?
Sorry, Mr. Davis. Anyone else on the council who has any comments to make? Alderman Giantonio?
Thank you, Alderman Salerno. I just also wanted to address Mr. Davis, and thank you for coming out tonight. The thing you said that resonated most with me is that the things that are alleged no one in this town should put up with, and I think we all agree with that up here. You know, as you, you stated, there was a meeting, there was a report shared. Now there is a process that needs to be followed. Everyone is entitled to their due process according to their contract or their terms of employment. I believe that that is what's happening right now. I believe the mayor is having the discussions and doing the due diligence that needs to be done to ultimately have an outcome that makes everyone happy, and I think we'll deal with the, the issues at hand that were raised. So thank you for coming out, and just know that nothing has stopped. Things are happening, and you know, the action will be taken once due process is served. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on the council who has a comment to make? I would, I would also like to say to Mr. Davis, again, for the timeframe, that is, we have a process here that has to be done, but I also want to, again, commend people for coming out to speak on these issues. Every member of this council has been fully aware of the process, in the sense that we have one, and that's very important. And I can say historically, having been a neighbor to the city and watched the, the progression of issues of civil rights, that I can at least speak to the fact that there was a time when we didn't maybe have the kind of process we have today. And, and I think that's very important to recognize, both at the state level and at the local level. So I think, I can't speak for members of the council on, on how they feel about everything, but I know they also respect that process, and we would expect all members of the community to do so as well. to do so as well. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council. The date is September thirteenth, twenty-seventeen, yes. The time is seven forty P.M. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons, Giantonio.
Here.
Smedley.
Present.
Carlosi.
Black.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
Naples.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Polkowski.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Salvio.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Sanders.
Salerno.
Here.
Thirteen present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, if it may reflect, that Alderman Sanders is reporting in, I'm sure, on Facebook from Puerto Rico, and we wish him well in San Juan, Southern Offices. And Alderman Carlosi is not here, tackling some family issues right now, so if we can have the record reflect that as well. We miss him, and we're sure he was watching from home as well. So hello, Alderman, and hello, Mama. Can we all please rise for the invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, look down on the people of Texas, Florida, and the Caribbean. Through your divine intervention, let everyone see your work through the eyes of thousands of volunteers and neighbors. We give thanks that people in harm's way recognize your helping hands through the heroic actions and volunteerism of these neighbors and volunteers. Give them the strength and determination to rebuild and recover from these disasters. We ask this in thy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Touching on the prayer a little bit, two things that I just want to give a big thank you to. One is to Nicole Springer and the New Britain Bees, who last week coordinated a drive in partnership with Syracuse Moving and Storage to pack the truck with supplies to go to Houston. That truck was packed, and it was at Houston the next day, with lots of water and supplies that were collected by residents and those that came in to the stadium to donate. So a big shout-out to Nicole Springer and her brother George, who plays for the Houston Astros, for coordinating that. Very grateful for that. And for this morning, as well, to Radio 104 DJs Fish and Amy, who hosted a Hurricane Irma drive at the McDonald's on West Main Street. Because of the, at the end, the owner of the McDonald's came by, Joseph Rodriguez, with a $2,500 check in hand. We raised $5,001 this morning for the Hurricane Irma relief fund, so. Yeah. We're a very giving community, and we're very grateful for those who extend a helping hand to help coordinate efforts like that. Very, very grateful for that. So, did anyone else have a point of personal privilege this evening? Alderman Giantonio for the minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for the meetings of June twenty-eighth regular meeting, July twelfth regular meeting, and August ninth regular meeting.
Seconded by Alderman Smedley. Any questions, comments, changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendments?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three proposed additions. Therefore, I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno. We're adding items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Yay. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons, Giantonio.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosado.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Salerno.
Yes.
Thirteen zero, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Oh, here we go. I got it up. All right, on to petitions. Oh, you've got a lot. Got a lot going on over there.
Yes, Your Honor. Everyone came back from vacation.
Oh, my mic's off, I'm sorry. I gotta put that back on. You have a lot going on over there, Mr. Clerk. Please read us off the petitions.
Thank you. First one is from Alderman Daniel Salerno. For the investigation and recommendation of ways to improve the area around three-sixty-six Farmington Avenue, from Blake Road to Osgood Avenue. Residents have complained of excessive speeding, and a considerable number of accidents have occurred in this area. Please increase surveillance and ticketing where appropriate.
Chief, are your ears ready? All right, that's one. Police commission.
Okay. Next one is from Alderman Daniel Salerno. For a study of the effectiveness of a current stop sign at eight thirty-three Slater Road. Residents have complained that vehicles disregard that traffic signal.
Police commission.
Okay. Third one is from Alderman Daniel Salerno. For referral to the Traffic Division or to the state, if appropriate, concerning the traffic light malfunction at the corner of Martin Luther King Drive and Winter Street. The issue is causing potential confusion for drivers and pedestrians, and it was requested by the North Oak Street NRZ members.
Okay, so we'll send that to Public Works.
Okay. Fourth one is from Alderman Daniel Davis. For conducting a traffic study and recommendation on ways to reduce and discourage excessive speeding in the area of two eighty-eight Alexander Road. Residents have voiced their concerns about unsafe conditions regarding speeding.
We'll send that to the police commission.
Number five, from Alderwoman Shirley Black. For the repair of potholes in front of five forty-four Main Street. Residents have voiced their concerns about unsafe road conditions.
Can I answer a petition from the floor?
Sure.
We just completed paving on Main Street. So Alderwoman and Black, I think your petition may be taken care of. All right, well, we'll send it to Public Works anyways, but for the record, I'm just going to tell you, it's been paved as of just a couple days ago. So thank you.
Number six is from Alderman Don Naples and Alderman Robert Smedley. For investigation and recommendation of ways to reduce speeding on Amherst Street. Request for appropriate signage relating to children playing in the area, as well as a stop sign on Amherst Street at the intersection of Fox and Place.
Okay, to the police commission.
Okay. Number seven, Alderman Robert Smedley. Please examine parking restrictions on Highland Terrace, Park Drive, and surrounding streets in order to achieve consistency with the restrictions in Belvedere-area neighborhoods.
To the police commission.
Great. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Chief, you got that? On to the consent agenda, Alderman Giantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only item I am aware coming off consent is item D. Therefore, I make a motion to accept consent agenda consisting of items A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
A through O without D, Your Honor.
A through O without D. Mr. Clerk.
All the persons, Giantonio.
Yes.
Alderman Smedley.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosado.
Yes.
Salvio.
I want to change my recommendation. I want, hold on a minute. I want N to come off.
Just for clarification, Alderman Salvio, that is just the report. There is an item on.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, thank you.
Do you still want N to come off?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes, all right.
Okay. Sanchez?
Yes.
Salerno?
Yes.
Thirteen zero, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Item D, Alderman Giantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item D.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item D has to do with the five-point-four-nine-three-million-dollar contract with Benton Construction for the park and aquatic facility improvements at A.W. Stanley. I took this off consent, because I know there's quite a few questions. I think Director Barbieri is hiding back in the corner, along with architects for the project.
I know, I hate that I can't see you from here, so I'm like looking at Jonathan, saying, where's Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, next project, Adam, take the columns out.
Yeah.
Right.
Or tell the department heads they can't hide back there, one or the other. So, Mr. Barbieri, I don't know if you want to just do a quick overview again for everyone's, you know, a two-minute overview of the project and how we got here, and then we can ask questions should we have them. Thank you.
Good to see everyone tonight. I did bring our A&amp;E firm that works on the project tonight, which is T.L.B. Architecture, Mike Fortuna and Eko Worrera, in case you have specific questions that you want to ask them. Well, as you know, we started.
Oh, a victim of the microphone, first one.
Who told me I was supposed to do that? So anyway, the project originally started as just strictly a pool replacement project, as the pool that's there now is falling apart in a disaster, and I think everybody knows that. As we started looking at the site, there was a lot of things that started to come up as we looked at the park as a whole and started to master-plan it a little bit, and determined that it would make some more sense to try to shift and master-plan the park overall, and make more sense of the layout of the park. The way it is now, it's kind of smack dab in the middle of the park. It kind of obstructs different sides of it, and never really puts programming on one side, open space on the other. It just doesn't flow very well. In addition, you have a ball field that is in existence that is unusable. The basketball court is old and needs replacement, it's in disrepair. So we wanted to kind of do a whole big master plan, and based on T.L.B. Architecture's experience, both with pool projects and with this kind of work, we hired them to put together cost estimates and plans for such a project. We went out to bid originally, and it did come in overbid, so we went back and did some value engineering to try to see what we could take out and make it a little bit more reasonable, which wasn't, you know, too, too bad. We were still able to keep a lot of the things that were a part of the project that we wanted. For example, we had two basketball courts originally, and now there's only one, and so things of that nature were removed. It went out to bid again, and there's still some issues with it coming in with more funding that we have, but we do have a plan for that. But I think we also want to stick with the master plan that the whole, you know, the mayor and the department and the public and the council approved originally, so that we can keep the pool where it, kind of sliding it up a little bit, making a new baseball field where the pool is now, and the basketball court up where it is now will stay in existence, new parking lots. The parking is another, kind of an atrocity over there, it's not very well laid out. The hill near the parking lot is kind of unusable space, so the plan kind of takes everything together and makes it something that is a more usable park overall. The reasons why it came in overbid, you know, market forces are market forces, sometimes things happen like that. We don't think that what we have here is an unreasonable project, and the money that we had to think we could do things like that, and I know these gentlemen have come prepared to speak to some of that to you tonight, if need be. There was some feedback that we got from questions about the poolhouse itself, and some of the fixtures seemed like they were extraordinarily expensive, and why do we spec something like that, and you know, those kinds of things. And I can tell you that, there's probably, you guys have heard this before, that we do have issues of vandalism in the park. So we had to build things that are, that we're not going to constantly be fixing. So a lot of the fixtures were done that were vandal-resistant, vandal-proof, that kind of thing, and they don't give those away. They're expensive. So we tried to do it with what we knew we were going to need to do to save maintenance down the road, and make it a more usable park overall. So that, in a nutshell, is kind of where it's come full circle in the quote-unquote "two-minute overview."
Thank you, Mr. Barbieri. I want to thank you, too. I think Director Barbieri and I had about a twenty-minute conversation yesterday about this. And just to kind of go over some of the things that we talked about, you know, we had talked about, there was a feeling that some of the plantings and things were called ornamental, making it seem like they were optional. Can you just kind of talk through that a little bit, and why they're not really ornamental and kind of needed?
Yeah, we have some, if you look at the plan here, these trees here are, you know, considered to be ornamental, but they do have a purpose, and that is, we're putting the pool in a new place, and that's going to open up completely to the neighbors that are across the street. The canopy of the trees here is pretty high, so in order to prevent that kind of new view or whatever to those homes that live across the way, something like that, to prevent that, to give a little buffer both for sound and sight, made some sense. But there are some other trees that are, those are in the base bid, the other trees are not that are on there, so there'll be some room if we don't want to have those. But some are there for, you know, to secure the soils and things like that, and some are just for, you know, the view, and for the beauty of the park, which I think is important, too.
And then one thing we also talked about a little bit was the schedule, and I think, can you just share what the plans will be as far as construction, and what the priorities for construction will be?
The way it stands right now is we're looking to have the pool done, is it June first? June first is in the contract that the pool needs to be done first. Then they have till the end of the summer, September thirtieth, I think it is, for the rest of the project. So the plan would be to get the pool built first, because we don't want to have to do unnecessary spending on trying to get the old pool ready, which is what we're doing, by the way, just in case, you know, we're not destroying the building right away and the pool, just in case. We have to, you know, we have a tough winter, which has happened sometimes, and they can't get done what they need to do. We have to be prepared to have a second pool, because there's no way that this community can deal with Willowbrook Pool, with the tens of thousands of pools, the visits to the pool that we get, it wouldn't work. There'd be people standing outside the fence, and we'd be telling them, no, we're at capacity, you can't come in. It would be a disaster. So we need two pools in the city. We used to have five. We need to have these two. So, you know, the priority in the project will be get the pool built, so that we have that for the recreational summer of 2018.
Thank you. At this time, I'll yield the floor if anyone else has any questions.
Sorry, Alderman Polkowski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. How are you, Mr. Barbieri?
Hi there. How are you, Alderman?
I do have a couple questions. I have them written down here, just in case I didn't forget them. I know we briefly touched upon the schedule, so you mentioned June first was the scheduled date for open. Is, within the contract, do you have any liquidated damages clause in case the contractor cannot meet that deadline for the pool construction?
Yes, there are. Standard stuff, that's in the, you know, the city's boilerplate stuff.
Perfect. Also, I know that we have already gone over the $5,000 budgeted item that we approved back in, I don't know, months ago. Right now, Cur-
Five million.
Five million. I'm sorry, five million. Sorry. My finances and the city finances are a little different. So the $5 million that was approved, right now, the base bid stands at five-point-four-nine, I believe, or something like that. I know that there were a few soils items, also with unsuitable backfill items. If there are any additional cost overruns, where do you anticipate those funds coming from to supplement whatever we are going to approve now?
Yeah, yeah. So right now, and again, those are just-in-case items, but we wanted to have a price from the contractor, you know, if it were to happen, and they're on unit cost. But we do have some other alternate sources of funding that I know the mayor has been working on, as well as myself, in regards to the A.W. Stanley Trust, that has money that's available now to spend. We're also somewhat hopeful that the state will pass a budget at some point, within the next whenever, to get the LoSIP funds coming again, which would be helpful. And I know that within our parks, bonding allocations, there are some projects that we, you know, no longer, they're completed, and there's some areas where we had plans for the money, but the majority of the work has been done, where we potentially could move some monies around to add to that total if we need it.
And one other question is, $5 million is quite a bit for a project, and as the mayor spoke, we just paved Main Street, we have all this construction going on, and with high-cost construction projects, usually we end up having a construction inspector. Is there a inspector assigned to the job? Is it going to be a third party? Is it going to be done in-house?
There's no, there's no line item for that in this budget, so there's nothing for an outside person to come in and do it. I mentioned it to Director Moriarty, that it is a big project, we're going to need something, and he did explain that there are a lot of projects going on, and so that it's a concern.[1723.13] So, that is something that needs to be discussed.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Polkowski. Alderman Davis. Don't forget to turn your mic on.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Barbieri, good to see you up there today.
Good evening.
Have several questions, a few my own and a few for Alderman Sanders. He couldn't be here. He's obviously in the Southern Office.
Okay, Southern Office.
First, you said June 1st, that's when we're looking to 2018.
Right.
When do we anticipate the project beginning?
I would like to think by, you know, early October, you know, the first week of October, something like that. I know that the contractor's ready to roll, that they want to go right away. In fact, we've, we have granted a conditional letter to proceed so that it could start doing some things behind the scenes with preparing permits and getting stuff ready, so that if it was approved, they could hit the ground running and go right away. And for the record, Benton has done pool projects before. They're well respected in the area for building stuff like this, so that is a good sign as well.
You mentioned the A W Stanley Trust Fund. We have some money there. Do you know how much?
535,000.
Okay.
Is available.
All right.
Obviously, that would need approval by the trust in an amount, you know, to be approved.
Yeah.
Which, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but they have, the trust has given some indication that they are desirous of giving to the project. They would like it to move forward, so they are favorable on that.
Okay. There we go. And you mentioned the project is without a project manager. Might that change or just...
Well, it's a conversation that has to be had with Public Works, and then if that's a no, then we'd have to get a price and deal with that, you know, because it is a big project and it needs someone there to oversee.
Has a project manager, and that's you. It just doesn't have a, oversee the construction, the day-to-day construction, management of the day-to-day operations onsite.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, now to Jim's hardball questions. Concrete, can you give us a more of an explanation to the concrete costs?
The cost of concrete? That, okay, that's, I'm going to have a...
A Mike Fortuna come up and explain it. Told you they were tough.
Know your strengths.
So, the concrete numbers, if I go back to the first bid, one of the bidders that bid the project the first time that elected not to bid it the second time because he picked up some other work, sort of opened his bid books to us. So, we got to see numbers that we don't normally get to see in an open bid process like this. And what it revealed is that concrete was coming in between $900 and $1,100 a cubic yard, which is nearly double what we typically see. So, to answer the question directly why that is, I don't know. We just recently had a project budgeted with a similar amount of concrete, and the budget was $480 a cubic yard. So, it's hard to know whether it's geographical or the complexity of the schedule. So, you know, what we taught, what we did when we saw that number, obviously, we were concerned, and we talked to a number of the bidders from the first round that didn't bid it the second time because we didn't want to get into any issues that way. And they all sort of bid it to the same group of guys, and they all got sort of the same number, so that number might be coming from the batch plants. It's hard to say for sure, but it was pretty consistent across the board, and there's lots of concrete here, so that drove the number up significantly.
Now, do you know that that cost of concrete per cubic yard, is that including labor costs?
Yes, that's an installed cost.
That's including labor?
Yeah.
All right. I feel like I'm almost done. Yeah, I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. May other Aldermen have any questions? Alderman Pobon.
I don't know if Eric can answer this, but is that's why we couldn't build the pool in an existing area, so we could have a backup pool just in case they're not finishing time?
That was one of the reasons, yes.
Wouldn't we save millions of dollars if we put it in the same spot?
No. No, the, I can have Mike answer this question if he thinks there's anything he needs to add to it, but the pool itself, the bath house and that whole piece of it has to be rebuilt and redesigned. Lots of times, going in and redoing things the way it is, trying to do those renovations are more expensive than new construction. But, so it's going to be rebuilt regardless, whether it's over there or it's over here. And quite frankly, programmatically, the way the pool is designed where it is now to save all those millions of dollars, we're doing something totally new. So, there's not a whole lot of cost in moving the pool over there as to over here. And remember, if we don't move the pool, we don't accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with the whole master plan, and that is sliding programming one way, getting open space on the other, the parking lots to jive better with where the functions are happening and things like that.
So, what would happen if we hit ledge? Is that an add-on?
We've done a lot of subsurface investigation so that we know what we think, you know, typical stuff before you do a contract, you know, a construction job. We have done borings and things like that, but we would have to deal with that if we were to hit it, depending on where it is and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. Going around, going around. Alderman Davis, sorry.
So, now we are, given, you know, the fact that we're 500,000 over, given the scope and size, and I know it's been scaled back somewhat, but what's the likelihood that we continue to run over? And what, could you guys give me like your best estimation to what that might be? I know it's tough now, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would be, to say, well, I think this project's going to run X percent over, I mean, I think any job is, that would be difficult to answer that question. I think we've done, because we've bid this thing twice, we know the numbers pretty well. You know, when you dig underground, there's always chances you hit something that you didn't know was there, and that would be have to dealt with, and depending on the nature of it, would drive the cost of, you know, how much it's going to go higher. So, I wouldn't even want to put a number to it, but, you know, I can, contingency money is usually in the 10% range, you know, on a project, things like that, just in case things like that come up. So, you know, there's no question that things like that could happen, but on the other hand, we need the other pool, and we have to kind of move, and we have to do it right away, because if we don't start construction now, much, I'm hearing schedule concerns from everybody. I agree, we have to get going.
And you just mentioned that there is a plan to do both in concert, right, simultaneously?
What's that?
Be prepared to open the old pool.
Yes, correct, correct. Just in case for some reason the schedule, bad winter, whatever, we have to be prepared to be able to open the old pool. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Our city masons will be excited.
Yeah.
Alderman Salerno.
Yes, through you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Barbieri.
Hello there.
One question I think is clear, if you could share, I think it's a public understanding of the nature of the pool, but when was that pool built?
The exact year? I don't know off the top of my head, but it was in the 50s, I believe. So, 52? There you go, 52.
I asked the question, I kind of knew the answer, but I wanted to hear it from you, because I think that's part of the, part of the reason we're doing this, and I, I mean, that's more of a comment than asking questions from you. I mean, my concern is, obviously, we don't want to see things go over budget. We appreciate that. I always believe that if you work really hard at it, and of course, the council here, we hope that we'll all be here with the council afterwards, but if, those who are in the council want to make sure that the project management is done, so I have an example here in New Britain of Smalley School, not Smalley School, but Gaffney School that came in under budget and came in on time. So, that's a goal, and I think that that's certainly the message that we want to send to you, obviously, but to the public. But I think in general, that's where we want to head. We need this pool for an assortment of reasons, if anybody realizes that. The age of the pool, the capacity, the lack of access for our kids this summer, I think, is worth the effort. And the other part, it's not a $5 million pool. It's a whole redoing of the area of A W Stanley, which, having watched it for years, is in dire need. So, I mean, that's just, I'm going to support it from that standpoint, and we'll be there with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madyo? Thank you very much.
I got one more.
Oh, Alderman Davis.
It's good I keep my mic on. The 10% that she said for the, I guess, contingency, where would that be coming from?
We'd have to find it from one of the three sources I just mentioned, you know, the three, the three options, the trusts, potentially LoSAP, or potentially other bond projects that we can reduce and reallocate potentially.
Okay, all right. I think I'm good. I hope I'm good.
You run that risk, and we run that risk with any project that we do, and it's a matter of being prepared and taking it from contingency accounts or having other options available, but also taking it as it comes to. You never know what happens when you start digging underground, and sometimes you find surprises. Yay! Like at the old police station. I don't have to tell anybody about that. We learned that the hard way. Alderman Hargreaves.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to confirm, we don't want to, we're not looking at to bonding anything else if the project was to run over.
Correct. We'd be going to other sources.
Okay, thank you.
That's also up to you guys. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm seeing no further questions. All those in favor of accepting the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming this evening. All right, we're moving on to resolutions. Resolution number one for this evening, Alderman Salerno.
Yes, Your Honor, through you. I would like to make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number one.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Smedley.
This particular resolution is coming out of an amendment, it's an amendment to actual Code of Ordinance, and it really brings us back into the 21st century. It's about the utilization of, for purchases of bids, or as I say, for bids being applied to projects here in the city that we can now accept them through electronic, the electronic process. There have been some horror stories about people trying to get bids in in snowstorms, and I think those just actually happen, and so we want to be able to move forward into the 21st century and get things done in an expeditious manner, and I urge adoption.
Welcome to the 21st century. Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number two, Alderman Rosato.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number two.
Seconded by Alderman Giantonio.
Resolution number two, the purpose of this to amend Chapter 11 of the Code of Ordinance to provide for improved procedures related to the collection of garbage, trash, refuse, and recycling, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rosato. Any questions or comments regarding this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number three goes to Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Alderman. Motion to accept and adopt resolution number three.
Seconded by Alderman Hargreaves.
Thank you. Resolution number three deals with the City of New Britain's Fire Marshal's Office. This pretty much changes some fees for inspections and permits. I'm sorry. This resolution has to do with changing some fees for inspections and permits that are set out by the Fire Marshal's Office. It just changes some. It's all listed here in the resolution for anyone to read, and also those at home or anyone in the city that would like to see, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions or comments on this? It's bringing us in line with our fellow departments around the state, and it was discussed, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number four, Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I stand proudly to make a motion to accept and adopt resolution four.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Rosato.
Thank you. The purpose of this is for Jay's Auto Sales and Repair for granting a certificate of location approval to allow a motor vehicle dealer and general repair license for property at 866 West Main Street. You know, this has been before us several times now. Had a minor issue a few months ago. You guys did the, you know, necessary needed work to be above board, and I know this body appreciates it, so I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any comments?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Okay, first of all, I apologize because I haven't been around for a few meetings, so I'd like to ask a few questions. I believe it's the Building Department that I need. Is anybody here from the Building Department?
I do not believe there is anyone here from the Building Department this evening.
Well, I don't know who else to ask, but originally, this approval of this property for this use required that certain improvements be made to the property in terms of landscaping and things such as that. And I don't know, there's nobody here for me to ask about this, so how do I find out if those items are still in the scope of the... Okay.
Up before, we are not invited. Are you interested in inviting the attorney up to speak instead of speaking on behalf of the city?
Through the mayor, yes.
Please.
For the record, Peter Alter, representing the owner and applicant, I do want to note for the record with all due respect that when this matter was deliberated prior to this time, Alderman Salvio recused himself on the basis that family members own a similar business nearby, so I just want to make that known for the record.
Not that that makes any difference, but...
I am happy to answer the question.
Please proceed.
The plan that has been presented to the subcommittee as well as to the Planning Commission and to appropriate town departments reflects the landscaping that will occur on the site. This is a plan prepared by our engineer, Dutton and Associates. We have Sean Dimick, our engineer, here. If there's a technical question that needs to be responded to, those of you who are familiar with the site now know that it's 100% open to West Main Street, that what's to occur is that a heavily landscaped island will be created along Main Street, as well as in areas adjacent to it. A large portion of the rear of the property will be revegetated and replaced into green space, so that this is consistent with the application that was made to the zoning board of appeals. I referenced that in my comments during the public comment session, and the plan that you have before you is completely consistent with that approval and is also consistent with what was presented at prior times, both to the subcommittee and to the common council in terms of the amenities in landscaping that will be added to the site. There are specifications for trees and plantings that have been provided as well.
And is all this in writing, sir?
Yes, sir. It's all part of our application and approvals.
Okay. Now, I also wanted to make a statement that I have lived in that neighborhood for 53 years, and my son opened a business on a different street around the corner, and, sir, I don't like you impugning my integrity and my purpose of being an Alderman here. Who the hell do you think you are?
Alderman Salvio, please.
Mr. Salvio, and I meant no dis...
I did not recuse myself because my son opened a business.
I...
Alderman Salvio, please.
I can only report that you, you did recuse yourself the last time this came before the common council. That's what I reported.
Is there a question for the attorney, Alderman Salvio?
All I wanted to know is if all these specifications are going to be completed and if they're in writing.
Yes, sir.
And you are saying that they are.
They are.
I am.
And you are not a city official, but I'll, I guess I'll have to go with that.
Thank you very much, Alderman Salvio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Salerno.
Yes, through you, Madam Chairman, Your Honor.
You can take us, unless you have...
Maybe just one question, if you, and you may or may not be able to answer this, and it's just an issue regarding the landscape. Is it anticipated that the landscaping would be completed prior to the opening of the establishment or not? Would you be aware of that? I think that was one of the questions that Alderman Salvio might have wanted to ask. I know we had some discussion.
Yes, I just confirmed with Mr. Ruiz and Ms. Cardona that the landscaping will be in before the opening.
And, Your Honor, I'd like to just make a couple of quick comments on this. Obviously, we did a lot of work and questions on this in terms of the committee process. A variety of issues came up with the, with the previous discussion. I, myself, have had the opportunity to speak to the owners of the business and for an extensive period of time, and I share that as a full disclosure because I found them to be very, very reputable folks and really are in earnest to be able to open up a business here in the city. I've had reservations about the type of business, and I say that as well because of the circumstances in West Main Street. And again, it's not just me, it's come from constituents in the past. My intention is to support this based on especially and primarily the owners of the actual business. But I wanted to say for the record that I anticipate to assure that the citizens of New Britain have a look at some of the other issues surrounding that particular area, that I think we need to take a look at other kinds of landscaping possibilities so we can beautify that entire, tire street. And if you go up and down West Main Street, you'll see some tremendous improvements going on in the area, and I would just certainly encourage them. I've also have spoken to the owner, and we did have a problem, and again, for the record, I had briefly said they did not reach out to me. I want to retract that from the standpoint they did. Fact is that an email miscommunication had taken place some time ago, but I certainly am urging that we move forward in that particular area, and I want to wish the owners of this building well and great success as they move forward.
Thank you, Alderman Salerno. Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, thank you to the Maddisons for your continued business in the city, and thank you to the Ruizes, and welcome to the city. I appreciate you sticking through the process, and I look forward to your business opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smedley. Alderman Rosado.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to echo those sentiments to Jesus and Melevar. I want to thank you for choosing New Britain as a place to invest in. I know you mean well, and I know that you've been praying forever for this situation. You know God answers prayers, so He definitely has been answering your prayers, and I'm looking forward to what you want to do to our alma mater, UC Goen, and what you want to do with the auto mechanic program. So, definitely would love to get in connection with that whenever you have a chance to get that together. But again, thank you for your vision and what you want to do as far as in our city, and I think it's a positive step in what we want to do in moving forward with our city and also the people that want to own businesses here, to see that you, you guys are people of character is a beautiful thing to see. So, I congratulate you, and I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Alderman Naples.
Your Honor, I was a, I'm a late supporter to this project. I was not in favor of the prior applicant coming in, and I didn't get a chance to answer Alderman Salvio, but his questions were covered in detail, very much detail in committee, to my satisfaction, I think to others, and I strongly support the new applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Naples. Alderman Salvio.
Yes. My comments had little to do with the owners of the property and more to do with the, with my fears. I have lived there for 53 years. I see the traffic on West Main Street. I wish you the best in your efforts to the new owners, but I don't know how often you've been down there, but it's a nightmare on West Main Street. Traffic backed up sometimes all the way to Plainville. So, good luck to you, but I will not be supporting this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Salvio. Anyone else? All those in favor, can we please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
For the record, Alderman Salvio, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which also goes to Alderman Davis as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt resolution five.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you. The purpose of this, Jeffrey Olivera of Olivera Automotive LLC seeks granting of a certificate of location approval from the common council to allow motor vehicle repair license at 311 Oak Street.
311 Oak Street. Does any other person have any questions or comments on this? I know it was discussed that way in committee. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. No for the record, Alderman Salvio, motion carries. Moving on, Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt resolution number six.
Seconded by Alderman Collins.
And I just want to mention that I'm navigating to do, I legislate, so if something happens, I like to turn the mic on.
We all are, yes.
Resolution number six, Your Honor, is accepting a grant for $15,000 from Eversource for the Brayday Diaz Grant, and it will be used to pay for the purchase and installation of LED indoor and outdoor lights throughout our city-owned buildings, helping to save us 62,000 KWH in energy use in the upcoming years, and I do urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Smedley. There are any questions on that? Our facilities and energy director, John Deladillo, is here, but I don't think anyone has any. Thanks anyways. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Smedley.
Motion to accept and adopt resolution number seven, Your Honor.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
This is also a grant, and it's actually the extension of a grant period to assess the prevalence and demographics of obesity in school-aged children at preschool, kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade levels in our city. The Health Department nurses will extract the data from existing health assessment forms at the schools. It is for $24,277, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Smedley, your show.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt resolution number eight.
Resolution number eight, seconded by Alderman Collins.
And this is a resolution also for grant funding through the Capital Region Council of Governments and the State Department of Public Health for $50,302 for grant period that ends next June 30th, and this is to upgrade the city's preparedness for response to bioterrorism, other outbreaks of infectious disease, and public health emergencies. I do urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, my goodness, Alderman Smedley.
Motion to accept and adopt resolution number 10, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
Number nine.
Number nine.
Oh, number nine.
Number nine.
It's number, okay, number nine. This is for Zumba Gold, Your Honor.
Was seconded by Alderman Rosado.
This is a grant that will provide a community-based exercise program to seniors in New Britain whom otherwise may not receive these services. Funds will be used for the certified exercise instructor. This is for a period October 1st through September 30th, and it is for $2,600. I do urge adoption.
Thank you very much. It's kind of cool. Any questions or comments? Anyone going to sign up to do it? No? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 10, Alderman Smedley. Just kidding, Alderman Naples. Alderman Pabon. Alderman Pabon.
Make a motion to something about, or the whose intent?
Seconded by Alderman Salvio.
Budget appropriation for the police department? This is money from the Justice of Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, Born and Jack. This is money that can be used for gun violence, community outreach, police explored, police allegedly, and the total is going to be $38,215. This authorized the mayor to go after it, and I urge adoption.
Why, thank you very much. Me too. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 11. Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another Jim Sanders special. This is, oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to accept and adopt resolution 11.
Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
I used to talk in this morning.
Thank you.
This is a budget transfer of $25,000 to construct an official dog park within Washington Park. Been receiving several calls, you know, asking and wondering when we might create such a dog park, so Alderman Sanders would like to thank you for kind of getting ahead of the, jumping the ball on this one, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? It's been going on for a long time. People have been asking for this for a long time. Alderman Salerno, he doesn't like dogs.
I love dogs. My daughter's dog especially. I hope she heard that. Yeah, Your Honor, and that is the comment, and I think this, I certainly have done some research on this, and I did share it with the members of the council of a concern that I certainly want the best possible park situation that one can finally can have, and I think my only concern is I, there are pros and cons, and I just think it's important to say that. I think it's only due diligence to be able to say that, and what I would hope that happens since it hasn't, it's just a transfer here of funds, that we take a hard look at some of the issues that do arise so that we don't have other problems in the course of time. And I just want to be able to make that comment because I think it is important to watch how this process works with this particular kind of project, and that's just my concern on behalf of the city, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much, Alderman. This is a roll call because we are transferring, so, Mr. Clerk, I look to you.
Other persons? G. Antonio?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
Naples?
Yes.
Pabon?
Yes.
Polkowski?
Yes.
Rosado?
Yes.
Salvio?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Salerno?
Yes.
13-0, Your Honor.
Motion carries. I'm so proud of you.
Don't be bothering me.
Brad, you're shocked. Alderman Naples, you have the next resolution.
Your Honor, I move to accepting it up. Resolution number 12.
Seconded by Alderman Pabon.
This has to do with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Master Municipal Agreement for Design Projects, and this resolution allows Mayor Stewart to authorize, authorize Mayor Stewart to sign the agreement entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Design Projects and execute any future documents related thereto issued by the State Department of Transportation. I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Naples. For everyone's reading pleasure, this is the same agreement that they ask us to pass on an annual basis. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Naples.
Your Honor, I move to accept and adopt resolution number 13.
Seconded by Alderman Collins.
This has to do with improvements in the Eddie Glover Boulevard Traffic Safety Project. It's a state project. A spirited public hearing was held, which I attended. People had a chance to voice all their concerns. Public Works Director Marariardi is here to, if anybody has any specific questions about it, I strongly support it, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Naples. Any questions or comments on this project? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt item 14.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
Thank you, Your Honor. This has to do with the city selling unused property next to Marvin Black at 103 Henry Street, who will be purchasing this property. It is 22 feet by 50 feet. The city doesn't use it. It is being purchased for $700. One of the reasons this, it's a sale property, but does not need to be referred because it's under our threshold. I urge adoption since it is a piece of property that the city owns and cannot use or do anything with, so I urge adoption.
Thank you very much. Just to kind of put this in the perspective for everyone, all of his neighbors have this little nook. He does not. It's a garden. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept and adopt item 15.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 15, a lot of you are probably aware that William Blair, our public finance underwriting firm, decided to move out of the public financing business, leaving us a void with our public financing business. Along came Maizero Financial, who, along with it, comes some familiar faces.
Mezzanine.
You guys will all see both Dick Thiebridge and John Healy here, who were members of William Blair. They have now joined this new company, so from a continuity standpoint, I think it's awesome for us. This, Maizero, if I'm saying that right, I hope I'm saying-
Mezzanine, you call it mezzanine.
Oh, mezzanine? Okay.
It's Mezero.
Okay, Mezero. They are a larger company, so kind of like a bigger fish in this pond, and I think these gentlemen will continue to serve us well. I think we all have the handout that they gave, kind of outlining their new, the new company, and I urge adoption, and they are here, should there be any questions.
I believe the fine gentlemen have a presentation for us. Frack and frack, please approach the podium.
Do we have the presentation electronically?
So, on that front, Mayor?
Oh.
Note to self for the future, we did try to utilize the new system, keep it paperless, but we had some backups, which we handed out, but note to self and to any other presenters, PowerPoint works better than PDF as far as quality, so the level of the quality wasn't there enough for Adam to greenlight it. So, we tried, Mayor.
How about that? The more you know.
All right. But it's our distinct pleasure to be before you tonight, and we thank you for even giving us this opportunity to speak. It was not my intent to have my first time coming back to the council chambers to be to introduce a new firm other than the one I joined two years ago, but, you know, life is funny that way. Just very quickly about Mezero, when we were in the process of evaluating new firms and where to go, we really had three chief criteria. The first was commitment to the public finance business. We thought we had that with William Blair. Obviously, Dick has been here for 18 years, representing William Blair with the city, but they had decided that it was not core to their business, wanted to exit it, and we've seen a fair amount of other firms, both large and small, do the same thing with public finance practices. So, we really wanted to find a firm that was committed to bonds and public finance, and we found that with Mezero. 60% of their business is fixed income, so it is core. We know that they're going to be there. They just celebrated their 80th anniversary, so they're one year behind William Blair as far as longevity, but they do have the commitment. In addition, the person who is currently our boss of the fixed income side of the company has been named the successor to the CEO of the whole firm, so to have somebody at that level of the C-suite who is a bond guy, just again speaks to that commitment to the business. The second thing we were looking at was capitalization. You heard Alderman G. Antonio say that it's a larger firm. As far as employees go, it's probably about half the size of William Blair, but as far as overall capital that they're willing to put at risk for issuers like the City of New Britain, it is about three times larger. So, at Blair, we would always stand up here and say, we'll underwrite up to $1 billion if we have to. At Mezero, we have the capacity to underwrite up to $4.6 billion, not that we ever want to, but we can do that, and that's, that's right. But, and so the third thing was support. What you often don't see as the elected representatives is a lot of the behind-the-scenes, you know, work that gets done by the finance department, not even just on a deal-by-deal basis, but day in, day out. You know, your finance staff is constantly looking at your debt, we're constantly looking at your debt, and so, you know, Lori might have something that she needs that, you know, she calls up and says, hey, can you show me a structure on this? Can you give me a snapshot of her debt profile today? All that sort of stuff, and so for us to be able to have somebody in the home office who's our quantitative support analyst and can do all that funky bond math and everything and really stick to both, two things that we look for, which is timeliness and accuracy, of course, for us to be able to have that is a true value-added, not just for you, but for the finance staff. So, those were the three things. Mezero checked every box, and so we feel really, really good about where we've landed and about our ability to continue servicing the City of New Britain, not just as well as before, but we think we're actually going to bring a higher level of service with this new firm. So, Vic, do you want to add anything?
I'm just glad that John introduced me. He's 18 years with William Blair. Couple of other presentations he's introduced me as someone who has almost half a century in the municipal business. He's aging me very quickly, but, no, I, you know, how do you follow John Healy? I mean, you can't, it's a tough act to follow, as they would say, but, you know, I've been known to be with his counsel and say a few words, so I will. It's great to be back. The toughest thing about what William Blair did to our clients, people like you, our friends, was to pull the rug out from under all of us, and it is really refreshing and great to be with a company like Mezero, so we can be back to say that we've got your back and will continue to be giving you the same, attempt to give you the same level of comfort and service to meet your needs as we go forward in the debt markets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Rosado's requesting a yield curve.
and service to meet your needs as we go forward in the debt markets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Rosado is requesting a yield curve.
Unfortunately, I haven't been able to change the yield curve by that much, but it's flattening. So you want to know? So we have, we have a flattening of the yield curve, which means it's a great time to be looking at bonded debt that might go out longer, as you know. You know, the difference between 15 years and 30 years is now very, very flat, and there's some forecasts, like, you know, I'm not an economist, but there are some people forecasting that we may be coming more to almost a level or an inverted yield curve, which would not be good for the economy.
Good Lord. Moving on. Any questions for Mr. Thiebridge or Mr. Healy? We're glad to have them back. We're glad they're not unemployed, and we're glad that they will still be able to represent the city and I'm sure do it very well. And just for the record, Mr. Healy is now Mr. Thiebridge's boss. That is true. Look it, it's right on the front page.
That's right. He's number one. He's number one on the masthead.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back.
Great to be back.
Moving on to Alderman Collins with Resolution Number 16.
16. Thank you, Your Honor.
We're almost there.
All right. Resolution 16. Make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number 16.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you. Resolution 16 has to do with the city of New Britain seeking to maintain uniform policy for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG payment. The city of New Britain recognizes that the federal constraints will determine funding allocations, and such allocations are calculated based on the city's population as a percentage of the total population participating in the program. There's different requirements, and this resolution allows the mayor and authorizes her on behalf of the city to accept the EMPG program conditions of eligibility for federal financial fiscal year FY 2017, beginning October 1st, 2017, and to execute any and all documents necessary for the city to receive such grant funds, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Collins. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Number 17, Alderman Hargraves.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number 17.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Polkowski.
Resolution 17 is for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department to provide after-school programs at Slade and Pulaski Middle Schools. This is in addition to the regular programs, are going to add more of art, adding more of the arts to the after-school programs for certain people. It's $55,000 coming from the New Britain Board of Education, and it's a grant, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Hargraves.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number 18.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Resolution Number 18, excuse me for a second, is from the American Savings Foundation from the, for the after-school programs in our Slade and Pulaski middle school programs. It's year 12 of the grant. The American Savings Foundation has been very nice to provide these programs throughout the years. The grant's $150,000 to pay for staff and all the supplies that they need in the programs. I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a general statement about Resolution 17, 18, and 19, and about the importance of after-school programming in our city. It is a tremendous opportunity for our youth to stay involved and stay off the streets instead of causing trouble, and the amount of after-school programming that does take place, it really supplements education that our students get. We all have a friend in common, Mallory Dupre, who's on the board of Ed, and you know her involvement with after-school programming, and she's a huge fan of these three resolutions and wanted me to share that with everybody. Our school buildings are our community centers. We have the Boys and Girls Club, yes, and we have park and recreation facilities. However, a place for the kids to go for food, entertainment, structure, and a place to learn after school hours is important, and this helps continue that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Smedley.
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Salerno.
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly, I think it's important to recognize that the American Savings Foundation has done this for 12 years, and that is just so important to have this kind of backup from an institutional funding agency, a program to give this to us, because our kids are so important for those after-school programs, and I concur with Alderman Smedley. Thank you.
And I'll use this opportunity to make my plug for the after-school funding to come from the state when we get a budget, because we're about $400,000 in limbo right now. It's a waiting game with everybody else. Alderman, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Hargraves. How's your knee?
It's all right. Thank you, Your Honor. I was hoping I was going to be able to stand and not sit back down for the entire three resolutions, but thank you, guys. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number 19.
Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
Thank you. Resolution 19 is for the Summer Enrichment Experience. The C Program, as we call it, it's over the summer, lasts about three weeks, and it's a very interesting program. We actually won some awards for it, several awards throughout the year. What they do is, there's a morning portion to the program where the students who experience some difficulty during the school year, they're able to get the academic enrichment going. And then in the afternoon, they bring in different providers from all over the community. They'll either be karate, or youth theater, or some of the Parks and Rec programs like we have here in the grant. What else do they have? The library comes in. So in addition to them getting the education, there's also a fun portion, because of course, kids in the summer, they want to have fun. So, based on that model, actually improving our test scores, reducing our chronic absenteeism. So these programs that we have, and we're lucky to get these grants, are helping our students on a daily basis, and I definitely urge adoption.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Item Number 20.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item has to do with, you'll remember back in February, we approved the soft recycling program with So Simple Recycling. They need a place to run this out of, so what this does is authorizes the city to lease property at 33-39 John Street, and then sublease it to So Simple Recycling, so they can implement that soft recycling program that we talked about, and I urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Might seem a little bit confusing, because we're subleasing. Just for clarity, that is to be in compliance with the state and the state regulations and requirements of what they expect from Simple Recycling, so the only way we could make that work. Simple Recycling is not, excuse me, is not just serving the New Britain community. They have about four or five other communities they have signed on to and have made the choice to make their home here in New Britain as being the first community that's signed on with them. That comes with employees, and they will be hiring local, which we are very grateful All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Your Honor, motion to accept and adopt Item 21.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Your Honor, this authorizes the mayor to execute on behalf of the city a letter of agreement with Connecticut Veterinary Medical Foundation for a portable storage container at 99 Oak Street from October 1st, 2017, to September 30th, 2019. This is the group that is behind the big fix that we do every year, and this is just to make that process easier and better, and I urge adoption.
Storage, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Item 22.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item authorizes the mayor to execute on behalf of the city a license agreement with the State of Connecticut DOT for 100 parking spaces at the Chesney Parking Garage to be used by Fast Track customers for two years, again, from October 1st, 2017, to September 30th, 2019. $18,000 paid at the beginning of the term, $500 increase. This is due to an increase in ridership in CT Fast Track and a need for more parking spaces in the garage, and I urge adoption and hope all those people that park there come and shop and eat and do all that good stuff downtown while they're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman G. Antonio.